So we need to appoint a chairman, a vice chairman, a clerk.
Again, my name is Conrad Ledger from Beta Group.
And those of you who are. I'm willing to chair. I'm assuming that's why you want to get back here for a while anyway. So if that's, if that's what you want, um, I'll do it.
When I'm.
Thank you, Wayne.
When I'm.
Yeah, yeah. But you need to vote on it.
Yeah, so we'll do that when the meeting starts.
Okay.
Oh, you don't want to study?
Oh, no, seven thirty.
Yeah, we'll wait for comment.
Seven thirty, yeah. And then, um, we'll need to get a vice chair. And what I had told, told them is that I'm going to do this for two or three months and, but the focus is kind of be trying to get two more people involved, one to fill the permanent seat and one to be, fill the alternate seat. And get, give you guys a chance to figure out who you want sitting as chair or vice chair after that. So I would definitely encourage anybody to, if you know anybody that's. It'd be nice to have an attorney, it'd be nice to have an engineer. And it's gonna be the two I'd, I'd like to see. I don't know if that's possible, but I reached out to one young guy that I know that's an engineer. Yeah, he's gotten back to me, I've got no idea whether he's interested, but.
I might have somebody in mind.
If you have somebody in mind, uh, you know, there's.
Right.
Something I think that, uh, we've lacked right along is not having a, not having an attorney on since, since Bill Pritchard was on. Um, is anyone interested in being the vice chair on the inside of the building?
Yes. So the total mileage is approximately two miles.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to say, well, I appreciate that, that out of confidence, but I, I'd have to, um, not accept at the moment. I just, um, tend to get in over my head, so.
You guys all are wearing more than one hat.
The list that we look at is approximately four miles total.
I'll, I'll, I'll take it for the time being and then we'll reorganize maybe when Wayne's situation comes around.
Well, she really wanted to, you guys are wrestling.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm honestly, I don't really want it to be honest with you, I would just.
No, I think, um.
We need to have.
Hello.
I'm.
Playing board?
Yes.
And we'll need a, somebody to clerk and one of the, I have, I talked to Rick and he's willing to come back as the alternate for the two or three months that I'm doing our chair. Maybe we make him clerk so he can deal with fees and that kind of thing.
You can't make an associate member clerk.
You can't?
No.
Has to be one of the main members?
Yeah.
I'm gonna lean on him for fees and that sort of thing, just saying. But somebody of one, one of, then one of the other three of you will need to come in as clerk.
Too much. If, if, um, if the secretary is missing, um, just take notes and it really never really happens, um.
And he's got his perfect attendance.
Great.
For now. Wait till summer time.
And we do have some really good dry reading for you. Um, she should get a copy of, of our plans as well as the zoning rights.
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe all of us, I mean, should have, cause I think it was recently.
I'll give our rules, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm also in the.
The rules and regulations and the zoning rules because they apply a lot of time. You have to at least understand them, you know, we don't.
And, and a lot of Dan's information, I'd like to read up on that too, you know, so if we could get.
A lot of that zone.
Okay.
But I think if you read, if you go over the zoning, that's pretty much what Dan follows.
That is.
Building code.
But good to know if somebody's here, who to point to if they, if they wander off of our.
Right, right. So it's, it's useful to, to have at least a passing knowledge of the zoning and, and as much, you know, eventually digging into the, the planning board rules.
And, and just maybe another suggestion is maybe, you know, emails and stuff, but like, I, I, I'd like to have a couple, like a cell number just so I can maybe text somebody or if I'm, if I'm not gonna be here or gonna be late or something, or.
So too.
Your numbers, that's.
So that's, that's something.
And, and from, uh, other.
Yeah, I don't have anyone's number really.
It's okay with me, I, I mind if you want.
So maybe we could make that up.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, I wanna have, I think it's important to have some communication. I, I think just to show some of that on it.
We have to be a little careful.
Right, absolutely.
Any emails that go to everybody can, can, it's a, a quorum.
Right.
So you've gotta be careful of those sorts of things. Announcements from the secretary is a different issue, but if any one of us initiates something, you gotta be careful with what it, what it's about. I mean, talk scheduling, that kind of thing. That's not a big deal. But if we're talking about a, a, something before us, it, it's a little bit touching.
So as far as not anything before us, but if this, this new concept that we have as far as, um, you know, this mixed use that's ahead of us, you know, that's something that it, it's difficult for us to totally grasp in a sense, because what are we truly looking for? You know, those are some hard things that, you know.
And that'll be in the rules and regs too, cause those are, and that's.
Yeah, really understanding that new section of the mixed use in the downtown, I mean, that's brand new for everybody. We haven't had anybody even come in and do that.
Yeah.
When we do, it's gonna be a steep learning curve, I think. Which will all be, all of, not quite on the same boat as you are because we did work on the revisions and getting it written and passed. Using it is something different. We'll reorganize in quite some time, you know, the last election, I think we pushed it, we have to push it.
You know, I, I, just looking at our agenda, so, you know, we, we could actually take that up now and just get that behind us before any other people know.
That's fine.
Probably will, but we gotta wait, then we have to wait until seven thirty.
No, cause it's seven ten. Cause we technically, our meeting started at seven ten.
The joint meeting did.
Right.
But I think that closed.
Yeah, they closed that.
They closed that.
We, we have not opened a meeting.
Not, no.
We did vote on.
Well, well, we're not voting on anything yet.
Upstairs we did. Oh, that, yeah.
That was as a part of the joint session.
Part of the joint session.
Yeah. That's, it's kind of fuzzy, but all we have to do is wait four minutes.
This is to certify the court's preference, and how it is determined and judged, the common, uh, the unions and necessi- uh, necessity, uh, acquired, town laws be laid out.
Have one true ground today.
Oh, yeah? I'm going to these towns that are just having fiscal union.
Oh, nice, nice.
So is this gonna be like, Timmy's living quarters behind you?
This is actually Leo's.
Huh?
Leo's.
Leo.
Leo, you know, the.
Oh, yeah, that's his guy. So he can be there?
He is there.
Yeah.
He opens up the door and pulls out his little desk. So this year, now, Tim and Leo.
Yeah, the old town hall is pretty good, actually. I haven't been up, well, I've been up in, I was up a month ago, yeah, but, okay, so, yeah, that much, yeah. Oh, yeah. Be interesting when that, when they actually figure out what they're gonna do with that space, the big space. I'd like to see it go back to the old hall.
We were kinda talking, picture like, you know, six grade beings up there, like, you know, like the way it was when I went to that, you know what I mean?
I ran, I ran my dance up there one year when I was in high school.
Really?
I went to Distract.
If you take it high, you're back.
Yeah, wow.
Scratch it.
That would have been, that would have been, um, I think the summer, summer of sixty-four. Sixty-three, summer of sixty-three.
Funny, just, uh, just, uh, it's on this side of the village, the town seal, like, the, I don't know where's the guy's face. That's in, that was in good shape.
Yeah, really, yeah. I didn't even notice that, but yeah, the, the whole, it's a, it was a beautiful hall. You know, it had a full stage, like bathrooms on both sides of the, of the stage. Had it, it got done by the stairs and it was, it had a balcony here.
What's this one?
Oh, wow.
We'll check that out. It's like, it's like the town's, it's like the town's seal guy.
Yeah.
Wait, that's, that's the, uh, picture of.
Oh, that's, uh. Oh, that must be over.
But he's. He, he's, he's right up top.
Right there, huh, yeah.
It's, it's awesome.
Was it over, over the stage?
Yeah, cause the balcony is, is that this way, so it's over the stage.
You're going that, right, that makes sense.
But even like the moldings, they're really not in bad shape.
I think, is it a metal ceiling up above, I think?
I don't know, John, what's it, what was that?
It was metal.
It was like a little, yeah, like a thin, uh, thin, probably steel.
I don't know, like.
Yeah.
It's, it's a public.
I mean, you could show moldies up there.
Public, public meetings, it's on tape, we, we're agreeing to putting the signs where there are getups.
Few minutes.
Okay, um. So, uh, the next, uh, order of business is, um, public hearing, consider the amendments to the town Hoover bylaws, section ten, through the salary administration call.
I think that's about time, am I, am I to call open, seven thirty? So first order of business, the reorganization. If somebody wants to make a motion for chair and vice chair, we can do them in one vote. I'll make a motion to nominate Wayne from there as the chairman and I'll nominate Al Curry to be vice chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I need those out here.
Do you wanna make Michelle the high clerk?
Yes, as well, as well, um, I'll make a motion to, um, to nominate Michelle as the clerk of the planning board.
Any discussion? All in favor, but, I don't know. Welcome, and welcome to the board officially, um. Hard to get out of here sometimes, you may have noticed. So I plan on being here a while, but, um. So we have the reorganization done. I think what we can do now is move on to the, um, we have some present people that wanted to be on the agenda tonight. We have three and the first is, um, a discussion of subdivision concept at four ninety-five South Franklin Street.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm twenty seat of Chris Road, that's later.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is George Paulson, calling civil engineering group, I'm registered professional engineer and representing, uh, Taylor Signarini. For, uh, just for preliminary discussion with the planning board. Um, I'm not sure, uh, how familiar the board is with, uh, this property, but this is the old tri-town property. Wayne Crosby owned, uh, Tyler was, uh, Wayne's grandson and, um, uh, Wayne died like three years, four years ago and, um, subsequently, um, Tyler, um, took ownership, basically, I don't know, inherited, inherited the property. And, um, and also, uh, just up, just before, uh, Wayne passed away, the town had been going through, uh, land court process for the entire, the entire property and they were trying to make a determination, the land court was trying to make a determination whether, um, whether Wayne owned the property, the town owned the property. But it's, uh, basically it was, there's a lot of owner unknown properties. So through a land court decision, which my, uh, my, my firm actually generated the record plan for, um, through, through the land court process, it resulted in a, in an irregular shaped lot, which is, uh, shown in the yellow and, um, so basically the land court has decided that that is Wayne's, Wayne, at the time Wayne's lot. And the rest of the properties is, uh, is deemed, um, owners unknown at this point until the land court potentially makes some other ruling. So, so what we did is, um, currently there's a, um, currently Wayne was using it as a, like, commercial setup. He had a septic service company and, um, and, but it's in a residential zone. And what Tyler wants to do is to, uh, build a single family home there. So what we did is we went out, we conducted percolation tests. We, um, we, um, went out, did percolation tests. This is the, the back part of the property. Went out, went out, did percolation tests. Got a border health approval for a new septic system, new well. We went to conservation, got approval on, um, on the, we got, uh, went through a notice of intent process and had an order of conditions to, to do the work. But the one problem with the lot is it does not meet zoning due to lack of frontage. There's only forty-six point zero three feet of frontage along South Franklin Street. So basically, uh, as a result of this, uh, we filed with zoning board appeals, uh, Mr. Moragati denied us, uh, through, you know, through the normal, um, process. We applied for a building permit. We knew that we were gonna get denied due to lack of frontage. And then, uh, after that, we went to the zoning board of appeals. We went to the zoning board of appeals and the zoning board of appeals asked us to collect a little more information so they can make an informed decision. So, um, the two things that they asked for is they asked for us to go to the planning board, discuss the possibility of doing a one lot subdivision, two lot subdivision, putting a subdivision road in rather than them granting us a waiver on frontage. And then the other thing, they, they also asked us to do some cost analysis on the reconstruction of, of the, uh, refurbishing the existing house that's there now, because there's actually an existing cottage that, what, you know, it's a dwelling that Wayne turned into an office at one point. But, you know, it has a kitchen and a living room, bedrooms, that type of thing. And the plan is to raise this and to build a new house with a three car garage. So what, they basically wanted us to exhaust all avenues of approach, uh, and specifically go to the plan board, see if a, if a one or two lot subdivision was viable. So, um, I pointed out to them during, pointed out to the zoning board of appeals that in my experience in the business for twenty-five years, that, um, the one thing that we definitely do not meet, we, uh, the, the width of the property goes down to twenty-one feet in this area. And so presumably, you know, the, the only way that we could create frontage would be able to create, would be to create frontage in this open area with a cul-de-sac. But to get to that cul-de-sac, we would have to go through a non-conforming, irregular width, um, piece of property instead of a nice, a minimum width of forty feet, which would be a standard requirement. So I don't have all the waivers here. There's, there's probably twenty waivers that we really need, but I just put down some general waivers that I know that we would need. And essentially we'd like some feedback, uh, you know, essentially on the record that, you know, whether the planning board thought this was viable, was not viable. Obviously none of this is binding, it's just a discussion. But, uh, they, they, they didn't wanna just take my opinion for it. They wanted me to run it past the planning board and get some feedback on record that the planning board would or would not be, uh, agreeable to something like this. So basically, uh, what we would be doing would be to, we would be, if we were to come to the planning board and seeking waivers, at a minimum, we would be requesting to use the existing fourteen, it, it, at its narrowest point goes down to about fourteen foot existing paved driveway. And basically, it has, so, in this, in this whole area, there's actually a brook that runs under this, all wetlands. So we wouldn't really be in a very good position to widen the road. Number one, it's only twenty-one feet wide here. And we would have to fill wetlands, that type of thing. So basically we would, we would have to, um, we would be requesting a waiver to use the existing fourteen foot wide paved driveway, to allow the reduction from a forty foot right of way to a twenty-one foot right of way in its narrowest points. And again, it would be, if we, if you were to approve this, you'd be approving something with an irregular width that varies, um, from this forty-six zero three, uh, down to twenty-one and then, as you can see it. And just so you know, the reason why it's drawn like this, the land court judge literally said, the surveying crew will go out and locate the occupied part, the part of the property that is physically being used, like up to the tree line. So that's what this is. It's basically like the, the wood line around the whole property and then the land court judge says, that's what Wayne owns now and then the rest of it is still in contention. So what, uh, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna continue with this. Um, we would be requesting the elimination of the requirement by sidewalks. Again, because of the lack of geometry, we just don't have the width. And, uh, and again, this is just a small little bridge right here, that, um, that, like, it's like a, a, a little cul, uh, culvert that runs under the bridge. So it's really between, it only being twenty-one feet wide, um, and being at a culvert, out of wetland, it's like impossible to make that wider. And then we would be requesting elimination of curbing, um, and then we would all, I, and then we also would not meet the fillets at the entrance, the thirty foot radius fillets. And that, I, in my opinion, that's kind of just the tip of the iceberg of what we would have to request for waivers.
Are you actually looking at two lots or one?
We want, we really wanna just have one house lot to, for them to build on. Uh, obviously if we could get two lots out of it, that would be great, but that is not our intent.
Is, is there enough land there for two lots?
Yes.
I'm wondering how the, the new, the, the new essentially shared driveway part of the, right, part of our rules would fit.
No, I think, I think Tim has a, cause we have a, an obligation to, a couple of different, we have an obligation to.
There's a new section. I'm not sure if you're going through that part of it.
I mean, it is our intent to have one lot. We don't want two lots. I just kind of drew it.
I think it would be easier just with the one lot.
Yeah, I do.
Cause you're only, you know, you're not bringing a whole different set of problems with lot number two. You know.
Personally, I'm not even interested in subdividing. We're just trying to fill the needs of the.
ZB, yeah, we, you know, we're not interested in, we're not interested in buying a form of petition. We kind of want.
We don't need you now.
No, but I, I think that's something that you should look at in our rules. There is a, a provision for a, a low number, some, a low number lot subdivision.
Do you know if, what the minimum right of way width is?
That's what I don't, I'm not, I'm not remembering the details of it. It's not something that, I don't think, we haven't even done one.
No, and I think, I think, you know, when you come back to another meeting, I think we'd have probably more answers. I mean, for us to just.
Yeah.
Come to, come to you and say something that, oh, definitely does that, makes it kind of hard.
Fourteen, fourteen feet with a second, with a second lot, fire trucks and it just.
That would be tough.
Yes, I mean, and again, ju- but, again, what, the other thing that we're up against is, we're up against, um, some, uh, timelines that are expiring with the zoning board appeals, uh, you know, I apologize, we have.
The decision date is May tenth. We are meeting with the zoning board next Wednesday evening. They just asked that we seek review of the viability of a potential subdivision plan, plan to exhaust all avenues prior to.
You know, I think it's possible, but I, I don't think we can tell you tonight that we can do it for sure. I mean, I have, we'd, like I said, these are new, fairly new rules that.
Is that a special process or is that just a regular planning board process?
Regular planning board.
I think it's right.
Yeah, it's not a special program, right?
No.
Um, if we were to, just under a, under a s- conventional subdivision application, would, uh, would the board ever be in a position to waive the forty foot right of way under a conventional subdivision configuration?
With one house lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if we have waived it in certain circumstances, particularly wetland issues, you know. But if it's, and if it, and if you're really looking for just one lot, I think it would be a lot more feasible to waive that. I don't think we've ever done a one lot subdivision.
Yeah, we did.
Have we?
Off the spring strip.
Have we? What did that, remember what that had, like the road? Can't remember.
It had a full layout.
A full, full out, full layout, yeah.
They don't have the fronters there either.
Right.
They just.
Okay, yeah, they use the circle.
And that, under those set of circumstances, would we file the plan board and the proposal would be, we wouldn't, we wouldn't build anything, we would just create the frontage?
Yeah, the sub, the, right, subdivision, the.
Would you ever entertain a hammerhead layout rather than, um?
Not for something that long.
Did it have to be room to, to turn around a fire engine? That, that little odd shape that goes up. No, on the, uh, the back on the driveway, that. Is that wetlands or is that upland?
That's upland. That's just, again, a little area where the tree line kind of.
How big is that? Is that an area that we, we big enough to turn around a truck?
No.
Not big enough.
No.
You could pull into it, but you wouldn't be able to make a pull roundabout.
Like, could you, could, could you pull in and back up, like a hand, like using a?
Just you're not gonna back out, you'd be backing down the road.
You could.
You could pull out of the way.
But like, would one of the fire engines do that?
I don't know if they would or not.
I mean, that's something we'd have to, you'd have to get appro- if, if that's possible, you'd have to get approval of the fire chief for that.
Would it be possible for you to give us any general feedback on a conventional subdivision, um, with, uh, with just a waiver of the, the roadway width, just on, on space value, through the normal subdivision control process? Cause, cause it, again, um, because of the time, timelines, we're in a position where we either have to withdraw without prejudice or hope that, um, the planning board approves it with, um, inconclusive feedback from the planning board.
So, so they have, they have, May tenth is that cutoff date?
Yes.
Yes.
And if you just withdraw, let us, give us time to do what we need to do, and then go back to them, I think that would be, I mean, you don't really give us.
Yeah, and I apologize for that, but as we know, for, you know, um, between our timelines and the reestablishment of the board members.
I, I, I don't think we can give you an answer tonight. I think it's what we're saying. And, and I think that, I would consider an application that requested all those waivers, but that have to be shown exactly what they're gonna be. All, everything from, like you said, the, the radiuses, the widths, the reasons, the wetlands, that you don't own the land.
So we, so, um, so we would probably come in with a formal preliminary plan?
Yeah, and, and a formal application.
Yeah.
We would, at that point, we would probably have to have our, an engineer review things on this side, the way we would a normal subdivision. And, and I, I think with one lot, we would be, at least I would be amenable to giving significant waivers. I can't tell you tonight that I'd give you everyone you wanted. That's the problem. I can't tell you tonight that I'd give you every one you wanted, that's the problem, right, you know, without really knowing what we're approving, we can't tell you we're gonna approve it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but it, it seems feasible.
If you do your homework, enlist all the waivers, you can go right into a definitive.
Yeah.
You don't have, you can skip right over the preliminary.
And the, our intent would be to have no site improvement, I mean, I, I, but I, I, that would have to be determined by me too. But, uh, yeah, like, maybe whether we did a little turn out here or whatever.
Yeah, I wouldn't even consider that, I'd just consider what you have there, as one lot. Get rid of that line.
Yeah.
The line down.
The line down the middle.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we could take it from there. List out everything in your, in your application on waivers.
Okay, so, uh, come in with a definitive application. And then, you know, even if we had to go back and forth a few times.
Yeah, oh, yeah. You know, we'd have to talk, you know, there'd be a, a number of waivers, I mean, you'd have to have waivers on drainage, you know, curves and drainage and all that. So there's a lot more to talk about than just.
Yes, I, and I understand that, it, it was more of a, get some general feedback under a conventional subdivision application, um.
I, I, I think it could work. How many acres is it?
Um, the entire pro-
The whole thing, yeah.
Like, oh, I guess, I don't know if I have that number.
Well, it's all right.
Yes, it's, uh, it's two acres, yeah, eighty-seven thousand. I mean, that includes everything in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You have a good night.
Thank you. Is one eighty-one South Franklin, is anybody here?
Yeah.
One eighty-one.
Yep.
Greetings.
Hi, I'm Sammy. Brett Cartwright, Grand Street Realty, representing Joe Rizzo. We met informally, and we met with the Economic Development Commission informally, and we're getting ready to submit, but I figured it was good to come tonight to, um, get the process done correctly, so we just do it once, engineers will be ready next week with a site plan will be ready for you, and, uh, had some questions, like with the application, cause you don't have a specific application for the town center of the district, so I, I was, you know, one question on that.
You mean a form for it?
Yeah. I, I took, um, I took the special grant permit authority from that one there, if that's okay, I'll submit that, is that?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. On the form, if there's a question on traffic impact, do we want a traffic engineer's in, you know, input on that, or preparation, or?
I wasn't here the last time, so I missed that first presentation, I mean, so.
Wanna go through it again for you?
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
Got some pretty good visual aids in here, cause I'm not that great a speaker, so let's do it. This is the, uh, this is the proposed, uh, building for the, uh, Twin Brook site, South Franklin Street, let's see if we can get you. Hey, everyone see that, okay?
Yeah.
So that's the front elevation of the building. Since this, uh, was made, originally it was gonna be on the right side, looking right where the Twin Brook building is now, but it works out better on the left side, so, I've got a floor layout, I'll show you on my iPad of what the layout will look like on the other side. So this is proposed, we've got up to twenty-four hundred square feet of, uh, commercial space, nineteen condominium units. I think there's sixteen two bedrooms and three one bedrooms, how that comes out to, it comes, there's fifty-one or fifty-two parking spaces in total in the, in the whole project. We need all the, the lot coverage, um, setbacks are fine. I, I guess, as I've been told, we're gonna be kind of the first ones to test the new, the new bylaw.
Yeah.
And as far as side setbacks, we interpreted that everyone is in that whole district in the town, where, cause there's some residential on the side, but everyone in that, those residents are still in that district, so we, we were going with the premise that that, would, you know, we need the side setbacks, um, what, what the zoning requires.
Yeah.
Uh, engineer has already talked to, uh, Benji as far as, you know, as far as the drainage and things like that, so he's working with him on that.
Yeah, how, without some, like, how would, Brad, how would the drainage kinda, I mean, that's, you're coming, then coming down a slope into.
Right, um, he had talked about, presently in, in the Twin Brook building, there's a, there's a drain right into the building from the street. And rather than cultech and, and doing that, he said that Benji felt as though he could put it into the system out, out in the street, um, as far as maybe replacing the manhole that's in the street, and then, um, you know, putting the existing drainage into a manhole to a manhole out of the street. As far as runoff from the building itself, we, uh, we frame, uh, slow that down, put it, probably put it in, he probably put that in a manhole and control the flow of that out, it wouldn't be a, a heck of a lot, but, you know, still we catch all the downspouts and things from there.
Is that gonna all be put together by next week?
Yeah, they're, they're, they should've had it done, but I, I, um, it was, they were gonna be done by the beginning of the week, midweek, so.
Are you, do you think you're gonna be looking for any waivers?
I don't think any, I, 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 the only thing is that we're, we've gone back as far as the amount of commercial space
Yeah.
to the residential, that's the only thing that was in question.
Yeah.
Brad, what's the square foot of the, the perimeter of the first floor, like?
The footprint of the building?
Yeah, exactly. Got that, I'm sorry. It's just ballpark, I mean.
Yeah, I've got it, I saw it, I've got this filled up pretty good, so.
I think it'll look, I think it'll look good, yeah. Is it setback, Brad, off the street a little bit?
Yeah.
It is, yeah, okay.
They were playing with the grave because it's almost, it's almost gonna be a nine foot cut. So we're talking about maybe, uh, tearing the front of it and lowering the, uh, commercial space down a little and then setting the, uh, the residential up a little higher. But I did have that on here as far as the. We've got, uh, let's see, there's twenty-three percent lot coverage, thirty-seven and a half percent open space, uh, there are fifty-one spaces. Existing is twenty-four, I'm gonna increase it to fifty-one.
There's still some inside, it, wasn't there a garage in the back?
There's on the back here.
Yeah.
He's got, he's got, uh, the file plan, he's got six garage units.
Okay.
On the back, so. Total, the total lot size is forty-six thousand seven twenty-four, is the size of the lot.
But that's, I just, next, next time, next time you hear, I'll, I'll.
Oh, I, you know, I think, it, it, you know, we, we talked a little bit about the, the percentage, commercial, percentage residential before, and I think you've responded to that somewhat.
Yeah, we tried to increase it, you know, as feasible as possible.
And I, and if, you know, and you're not gonna be looking for any other waivers, so I, I think, hope, you know, this is a good one to come through first time, cause I don't,
It actually is.
it's not gonna be, you know, we're not gonna be, uh, uh, quite so pressed to, to give, you know, to make waivers, uh.
Yeah, we tried to fit everything we could.
Yeah, so I think it's, you know, I, I think, once you get it all pulled together and you've got the drainage information, um, and the actual engineer drawings that are ready to go, um, I, I think we'd be in good shape, we'll have our engineer review the, all the drainage stuff.
The actual.
So as you see, we switched it to the other side.
Yeah.
And he's got all the parking, he's got the, uh, I think he said he has twenty, he was worried about twenty, he's got twenty-four feet between the back of the stalls right now.
Yeah, and how far, or what is the setback off of, uh, South Franklin? See, that was another thing, the, 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 the new, um,
So it looks like it's basically a third of it.
We're looking for it to be almost right on the street.
First floor will be commercial.
But doesn't make sense on that lot.
Almost, yeah.
Right, right, right.
He's got, uh, twenty feet.
Clean that up correctly. So it's still, it's still close, I mean, we, the, the new rules want it close, but it's still a setback a little more, and I think that makes sense there.
Then you get into semantics, whether, you know, the overhang and the walk is part of landscape, but the overhang is a part of structure.
Is there only one entrance or two entrances, or?
Kind of one, right?
I think it's one driveway, yeah.
No, there's gonna be, uh, walkways on the side also.
No, but driveways.
The main driveway off of, off of South Franklin.
Yes, it's con- the existing. Well, actually, when you think of it, though, there's two entrances there, so one'll get closed up.
Okay.
There's two actually curb cuts at, at, uh, one eighty-one South Franklin.
That are there now, right now.
Yeah, so one'll get closed up.
But the new design just has one.
Correct, yeah. We'll have one there. Yeah, it's got some green, green spaces there.
Yeah.
As I said, we, as I said, we interpreted on the side setbacks, um, they're gonna be close to the line which the bylaw allows.
Yeah.
If the, the, uh, district is that town center of the district.
Yeah.
That was one of the debates we had with the engineers, but we said that's the concept of the bylaw, I would think that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I'm, I mean, yeah, again, very, very minimal wa- waivers at all, but, and I think that, as long as it's all written up and, and we get a full set, we'll get the engineer reviewing drainage, that sort of thing.
I appreciate you answering my question, because I'll, I'll make a phone call, because I think the traffic engineer, without having to count South Franklin Street, will have calculations of size of units, trip generation, and things like that, we should be able to be okay with.
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's gonna be.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but it's part of the submission.
But it's part of the, you have to respond to it in the submission. Good.
Any other questions I can, so hopefully, will the, uh, committee, will they have a meeting in May, or are we?
Well, when you get your, uh, submittal in, we'll, I mean, we don't have another date set yet, but it, it will probably be in May, you know, I don't, you know, how quickly.
Cause I know those notifications will have to go out to the butters and things like that.
Well, for the, yeah, this is part of the public hearing, right?
Yep.
So we'll have to do all that stuff, yeah. So you'll have to, and coordinate, uh, with, with NESC, to make sure you get all the notices out, you get the receipts in, all that sort of paper.
We also need to set up the review fee.
We have to set up the fees, and, yeah.
Yeah, the fees.
I think, I think that.
But we can send that out to Brad, all the fee structure and stuff as well, we can email it to you.
And I think, I think the only, really, it may not be in May, just cause, what's it, thirty days, that has to be?
Oh, the actual public hearing won't necessarily be that quick, yeah.
Probably like in June sometime, then, right? Divide and we get everything done correctly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, the first time, okay.
Yep.
Excellent.
And that gives us some time to get another member, cause we're down an associate member on a special permit, so, that'll give us some time to find somebody, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, good night. Well, you waited very patiently.
Yeah.
I'm up.
Twenty-seater crest.
I'm waiting to see if I can borrow one of these boards from back here, I, I, um, found out about this meeting this afternoon. It's, I know absolutely nothing about this process, and I'm a little scared right now. No, no, I got, had I known these other pros would be here, anyways, um, give me a minute to set up.
Oh, yeah.
I just had a hip replaced four weeks ago, so I'm gimping around a little bit, I'm gonna just use this. If I had more time, I would've prepared things quite a bit differently. I'm also unable to stand for very long, so, I'm gonna squeeze up close.
Actually, why don't you, why don't you lay it right up on here?
Okay, well, I thought.
It's fine, it's fine, put it right here, put it right here.
Oh, there.
Can everyone see?
Yeah, put it right here, we're fine. Pull the chair up.
Yeah, and then you won't have to be standing up.
Okay. A little history, um, I'm an old townie, as, as plain would know. Uh, my brother and I grew up in this wonderful little house, which is situated on this piece of property, and it sits right there.
That, uh, yeah.
Uh, my parents bought all of this land many years ago in nineteen fifty-three, and have lived there, um, almost six, over sixty years. They actually built this house themselves.
So we're talking, just so we have everything, so, um, Cedar Crest is off of North Franklin Street.
That's right, North Franklin, it's right here.
Right.
Cause there's a cedar road off of.
Yeah. Oh, no, no. That's what I thought it was, no, this is the, this is.
Okay, yeah, and these are the big high tension towers that go right across just before Brant Street, or it's a tiny little road. Um, this house, for a long time, um, my wife and I live in Duxbury, in a big old house that I renovated, the kids are gone, the dog died, and all of that. And we were thinking for a long time that we would move to this house. But in the last couple of years, uh, my mother, who lives with us, has developed, um, dementia, and will need to be put in a nursing home very shortly, within a year. So, we need to sell this to raise funds, to fund all of that. Um, we have looked into developing this, and there really is no access in here, although I think the town owns something back here. Um, so we haven't pursued that. But what we are thinking is the possibility of putting a house, or a building lot, in this field up here. This is the house, this is a view, and I'll pass this around. This is a view from the top of this hill, standing right here, down looking at the house. And I've done that so that you can see the road, and you can see the beginning of the field. This, by the way, is perfectly flat, whereas the field is quite sloping. This view here is looking this, from here, this direction, and you can see that it's a good sized field.
It's complete ball, I'm not.
Yes, you did. We used to chase your sister around in that field.
You might not say that to me, but.
Harbor was a different place in those days, so, that's kind of what the, the piece of land looks like. Our, my question is, and I went to see an engineer yesterday, and she said, well, we really, it doesn't make any sense to go any further. Um, I can do something for you, but, um, she sent me the proposal today for five hundred dollars, so I'm here finding if my five hundred dollars is going to be wasted. She's going to look at the size of this, and there are a lot of odd things about this. Um, this particular road, I'm not sure of the status of this, it's the right of way, it used to be a driveway to a house here, and it came around the corner. And then, my parents, when they bought this, developed the right of way, it ends here, but the road continues down here, and Jimmy Day owns a house right down here. My question is, I, it's a, it's complicated, you know, I'm thinking that a driveway could come in here, and a house could go right in here, if this could be made into a housing lot. What we would then do is sell the lot and sell off the remainder of this and raise what funds we could from both of those things. So my question for being here is, does it make any sense to go beyond this presentation, she'll hire this woman for five hundred dollars and come back with some sort of plot planned?
So what would you be actually looking to?
Put a house here.
Just one house on that lot?
One house, that's right.
And where's?
Why wouldn't, I mean, isn't that almost a, an end, huh?
Well, you know.
Where, where is, where, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Where's your mom's house right now?
Right, right there.
On the other side.
It's on the other side of the street.
And this, this is looking down from this point. And this, this is looking down from this point to that.
Do we have a frontage ball in that?
It seems like right here, it's like, there's plenty of frontage if this is, this, if this is the road, you know.
Well, that's the question in my mind, it's a right of way, is it, is it a road? I, I can tell you that the town has been maintaining and plowing that road since nineteen fifty-three. They've reached, they last, ten years ago put water down it, there's electric duct electricity down it, um.
My suggestion would be to have a conversation with the building inspector.
I did and he sent me here, he did.
So, did he say why, did he say?
Same, same thing, he said the next, well, he said a couple of things, he said the next thing you need is to come with a, a plot plan.
Yep.
To, of what the lot would look like. Um, and, and then in talking to your secretary, she said, well, they're meeting tonight, maybe it would be sensible to see them tonight. And given that we'd love to try to do all this as soon as possible, this is the best time of year.
If that's a road, you, you don't even need any approval.
Okay.
But he has to create a, create a lot, right?
Right, well, yeah, cause it's all one lot now, right?
This is all one lot, yes.
Including the, where you wanna, right, so you would be splitting the lot, you would wanna split the lots, yeah.
That's exactly right. Yeah, and I don't know where it may be between this frontage and there's enough acreage, I think it's twenty thousand, is there? There's plenty of frontage that's to show.
Yeah.
And there's, every bit of this is a beautiful spot, uh but I don't know if a piece of this would have to be taken to make up the proper um footage.
Alright, but, and then you would own, you'd still be calling that a right of way, but then you'd own property on the other side of the ro- road.
Well, I mean, it's, I, you know, I, it's been maintained as a road by the town since my whole life, essentially.
Not that you can't do it. Right. Right, and not, um, not a performing road.
Well, yeah, right, right, it's not a, it's not an accepted road.
That's right.
So let's start, cause we're looking at this, so that's, that's, which, let me.
In a private.
Oh, yeah, okay, so you are looking north, okay, keep going.
Yes, so then, yeah, this is, this is a line, you're exactly, you know, this is north, that's north, yep.
It's a road.
Oh, that's. So. Let me see where, let me just turn this to see. Why, I think we're down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, oh, I know where we, I know where we are, okay, yeah, I am. This is Jimmy Day's house, this is my house.
Oh, that's your house, there.
That's the house, right there.
Okay.
And the field is right here.
Is right here, is that whole?
That's right there, big, big pine trees here, but this is that.
Alright, so I guess what's odd is this, this right of way.
Yeah.
Is somewhere in, in here.
No, it's up here. Uh, just the scale of where the. RD is, RD is right there.
It goes up to the, the road is a.
Okay.
North Franklin's up here, right?
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's.
That's right, that's what Franklin.
There's North Franklin, that Cedar Crest coming off that Franklin.
And that's accurate, okay.
And that elbow goes this way.
The elbow goes that way, and so.
Yeah, and his house is down at the end, well, it used to be the end.
Uh, this is Jimmy Day's house right here and it's obscured, there's some big pines there.
Yeah. Yeah. Where, where was the fire road that used to go down further in?
So. Oh, it, it continued right down under these trees.
Okay. Okay.
And it, you can still get to the high tension tower through there, it's not.
At least it slid down.
Oh, yeah, it was a hell of a ride, wasn't it?
Let's take it one step further, why can't we put another house on the other side of the street?
Well, interesting enough, my parents um were always hopeful, they're two, two boys would come back, one put a house here and one put a house here. The house was put right here for that reason, it's very close to the boundary market here.
Oh, the Cowan House that's there now, yeah, oh, that's there now?
Yeah.
That's, that's.
There now, oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's right, it's about twenty feet from the boundary line and their hope was, well, David will live there and Milton will live there, but that didn't happen.
Yeah, I don't think we have enough frontage for, for that.
Right, yeah, you don't, but back in fifty-three, there was no zoning, so it was a possibility then.
Sure. Sure.
Uh, honestly, like I like, just having this, like usually if I know that something's coming before, it's like I'll look at it somewhere. And I didn't even know if this was even coming on, but I, I'd like you to invite you back to the next meeting so that I could just, I, I like to get a visual of.
Sure, sure.
Well, that's, that's why I'm here, if, if it looks like it might be possible, then I call back the engineer tomorrow and say, do the plan.
You know? You know. Right. Yeah, well, I would, I'd sit tight till our next meeting and then, just gonna, I just like to.
Well. I'm just thinking ahead though too, though what, you got a lot of land out here, I know.
And it's beautiful land too.
Yeah.
I mean, talk about like a shared driveway or some, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether you could end up even getting more out of it if you opened it up down that way, but I don't know how you'd do that where the house is, but you might be able to.
Well, we've. We had a big time developer approach us back in two thousand and eight who offered my mother a million dollars for.
For the whole, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what else do, other kinda deals he had worked, but.
Can you find him?
Can you find him?
Oh, he said you could give me five million, I wouldn't move.
No, but if you could find him today, that might work.
Oh.
He's bankrupt now.
Well, two years ago, you know, you have a developer, Kevin somebody?
Kevin Kane.
Kevin Kane, yeah. He had put together a plan that involved our land, Jimmy's day land and, and Robert Steichler's land.
Yes.
And they were gonna put some sign of senior housing or something down here. And they, at that point, they offered us three sixty-three for all of the land and we were all for it, but let's say, it didn't happen.
That, that was one of the possible access.
For Deosol. Yeah, yeah, we talked to Deosol.
Did you?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, he was of the mindset, sure, I'll buy it and I'll pay her every time I build a house, well, I'll be a hundred years old by then, so.
Oh. That's very good.
You know, for us, this is kind of a fire sale, we do not wanna do this, but.
I'm just saying, if you could find a developer that would, that could look at it in a different way.
Yeah.
The only thing that scares me if you're gonna really develop this whole property is this.
Well, that's the, that would be one of the biggest problems, that's a very, very narrow road.
So that's, you know, if you, if you could expand, if you could expand this, then you're, then you're talking, but you know what, there's houses on each side of it.
Then you have something.
Not only there's a lovely house right here, but I'd love to see burned down, but.
Hasn't been kept up very well, it might fall down.
There's about fifty people living in the house.
Is there really?
Yeah.
Yeah, Brad told me that.
So, is it, this is, is this all part of it too?
Yeah.
Okay, so you got the easement and then I'm looking, you got some wetland coming through here.
Yeah. There's um, let me see.
The town owns something back here, doesn't it?
Uh, there is a little spot here, uh, let me just reorient myself. Come down here, there's a spot here.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, it kinda moves through here, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
It's weird.
Okay.
So how many, how many acres is this?
Nine. Now, it's, you know, and my parents bought it thinking, well, this is our future and we'll sell it down the road.
Yeah.
No matter what, he still has to do the plot plan, just to get balance and stuff.
Yeah, you need that.
So for five hundred dollars, I, I'd never do that.
Well, that's being an absolute neophyte, not knowing, you know, it's possible I couldn't walk in and say, right, you're mine.
I, I think pro- probably, I mean, if the town has been maintaining those as roads, then they're roads. Even if the, this says right of way, it's a private road, if it's been maintained as a road, it has water on it, it has electric on it, it's a, they plow it.
They even replaced the water, water line a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so I think you would have a legitimate claim that it's a road and you have frontage. And you could probably, I'm not, the size of a lot is probably amenable to two lots and they would both have enough frontage. So I, I don't even.
You mean two lots here?
Yeah.
I'm sure I don't have enough room though, do I? You might not have spare footage, yeah, that's what I think, that's why the, the engineer said, well, what, well, the other, she suggested another thing too, is that suppose you.
No. Yeah. Might not. Yeah.
This was the boundary line for the new lot and the right of way was now on this piece of property.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's, then you could.
Then, then you could do it, it's conceivable.
You might have.
Say that again?
Um, instead of this being the boundary line for this piece of property, this would be it.
Yeah.
You'd still have more than enough frontage and you'd have, I mean, this is thirty and it sits over a hundred feet, this is thirty thousand feet right there.
We even have, we even have a new regulation of, of a sh- basically a shared driveway. So it's possible that something that, that, you might have, when she looks at it, how to put it together, tell her to look at that as part of our new regs.
Okay.
Um, she can't change that, she can't change that, that road.
No, but she can change where the bound, where the ownership is. Cause it's a private road.
Okay, but you, right, but you can't change the lines in the, in the.
No, no.
On the roadway itself.
Right.
So just change, so just make it part of that, the field line, the bulk part.
But anyway, yeah, yeah.
No, the decision was made a number of years ago that if, there are only four houses here, it would be prohibitively expensive, so they allowed everyone to have something.
Yeah, it'd be too much money.
And it's wonderful stuff, there's nothing but glacial gravel.
Yeah.
And I actually dug the cesspools behind our house and it. Needed to be six feet, my father insisted on fourteen.
I would, I would have a draw up, I mean, for five hundred dollars, it's not gonna.
Yeah, I, I think the likelihood that you're gonna be able to put one house there is pretty high.
Makes a bank, you know?
Okay.
And then, and then what I would suggest.
You know, you might be able to do more than that, but I think that is pretty high.
Yeah, I don't know much, but the whole shared driveway thing, could that allow him to put?
You have to do something down there?
Put up the line outside, with the whole shared driveway?
Yeah, but then you're looking for the right frontage and stuff like that.
Well.
Yeah, and this is.
You know, yeah.
This worked very well when you came in through Steichler's lands and came around, it worked very well, but it just, it didn't happen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jimmy, Jimmy Day was a very nice fellow, just wants this to stay the same, man, I don't blame him, he grew up there too, this is a piece of heaven down here.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you could.
I mean, you got this whole big block right here.
Oh, yeah, and this is all high dry land.
You could put a road in. You could put a road in right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come down, do a circle just like we just saw.
Yeah.
Well.
Go, go all the way out east.
Yeah, but then you get back there, then you start getting the wetland, you get closer to the right of way.
Then you get into the, you can do a shared driveway, but you get back here, you're talking full, full roadway.
Then you're talking a full roadway.
But this is, this is the hang.
But that's the hang, that would be the hang.
Yeah.
You know, several years ago, there was a house here that was for sale, um, for three sixty, that was, was the access in, but who is three sixty?
But that's what it's shown, Paul, don't they usually typically give you?
Yeah, if you get them. Sorry. Them one piece would give it to you.
Yeah, that's right. And I, we own this corner, this strange little corner here, we own that.
Um.
So if you ever got this lot, it would be.
Oh, then you could.
But then it's a long road and.
Didn't you do a land swap with that corner line? Probably not. They wouldn't want that weird little thing in the back anyhow.
This, by the way, is beautiful timber, you know, like there are pines here that are thirty-six inches across at the base.
Wow.
I haven't been out there for a while, but.
Yeah, it's, this is all high and dry, Jimmy's land is a little bit wet.
It gets wet over that one.
Yeah, yeah. The dislanded here is a little, it's a little overgrown, there was a huge fire that went through there a hundred years ago. A lot of underbrushes come up.
Well, I mean, that one thing, I'm a, you know, is you have a very good shot, I, it just seems like there should be something more you could do, but.
Well, I'm still stuck here, well, I think.
But if that's.
Your mom's house is right here, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So if you put a small driveway in here and just access one house here, you still have the frontage in front of this house. And you have a single driveway coming down here to put in one more house.
And then you could probably still put one in that triangle.
Yeah, but that, oh, yeah, definitely one here and then one here.
One here and another one there.
You could end up with three, including the one that's still there.
No, two, oh, including your lot, including your lot, yeah.
That could still stay.
One, two, three lots.
So you could end up with three out of it as opposed to, I, I think that probably would work.
Do you think, I mean, that means putting some, this is fairly steep in here, well, you remember the hill used to slide on?
Yeah.
It's fairly steep here, there's a drop off behind the house, but it's beautiful land back here.
Well, that'd be something you'd have to look at, whether it was too steep to, for a driveway or not, um.
Right.
Well, I mean, it, not like not nothing, but.
I don't think.
It, even if it's real steep here, you could create a nice slope up to get out.
Yeah, you could, you could.
I mean, cause then it really levels out.
It's really level in the back.
Yeah, it really levels out down towards the back.
Yeah, yeah.
This was a field when we first moved in.
You can see where the stone walls were, then you could call it a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could have three, yeah, you, you could probably get three lots out of that, out of the wall.
So this stone wall's gone now, is?
No, it's still there.
No, it's still.
That's still there, but this is yours.
Yes, that's right, that's right, there are wonderful stone walls through here.
Wow.
Having done a little bit of stone wall building.
But your engineer will have to just, on the frontage of your mom's house, make sure that that conforms.
Right.
With the driveway that comes out back.
Okay. Now, I, I, one last question, when I went through the application, I was kind of overwhelmed, there was drainage and sewage.
You know, it might even be another ANR, there might be enough frontage there for two lots.
So, i- in a situation like this.
Right.
In a situation like this where we have this road that's nonconforming.
But it's a road, look at all the roads on the Grove.
Yeah, um, but. You know, I, I guess.
All the developers who have seen that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, to put a big subdivision in that, that's no way it would fly.
It's out of the question.
For a while.
No, unless you start getting more property and making a, making a real road now, but so I guess, you know, is, is at some point, is, is the fire department or somebody would come and be like, you know what? It's, it's too much, you're just putting too much down here on this little sixteen foot, you know?
I, I don't think so.
What's, what's the water lines down there and all that stuff, you know?
You'd have to look at that, yeah, whether it be big enough for two, for two more houses.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, those sorts of issues you'd have to look at.
Right.
But this, what's frontage for a house?
I think it's one twenty-five, that's what.
Oh, one twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's not enough for two, I was thinking if there was enough here for two, you wouldn't even need the shared driveway, you could have had frontage for two lots, but I, but I don't think it's enough.
Yeah, he needs a driveway.
That would be a possibility, a, a shared dr- uh, you know, a driveway to the, to lots.
Yeah, and, and putting, you know, and you could maybe get another lot back here, I think this one is high probability. The other possibility we looked at is, is if Jimmy Day would like some of this property back here.
Oh, that's fine.
And which would give him eighteen acres, which is fine, and we like Jimmy, if, I mean, things work out for him down the road, yeah, great.
Sure.
But if this were straightened out and added a little more land here, maybe you could do two lots. You know, if Jimmy gets what he wants back there.
But frontage is what, yeah?
One twenty-five.
One twenty five is not enough. Close, well, mother. Not quite. But if he owns over here, and he, and you could come over up to this much.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then he got, I mean, you could, he'd get a lot more than just that little bit.
Right.
Then you could end up, you could end up with two A and R lots, yeah, a, approval not required.
And that means one driveway in.
No, you would have, you would just have a driveway off of the two, off of the existing road.
No. Eighty two.
This is, this is fairly steep, that, this is a nice flat entrance.
Well, you could come wherever you came in, but you, you, you know, you could come in, but if you went over this way, you could come off of here, across the street from your mother's house, right?
Okay. Okay.
That's fairly flat there.
Yeah.
It's just this piece that's steep.
That's right, that's right.
So if you came in with one driveway here, another driveway there, and had two lots right in here.
So who owns that other side of the pie?
Uh, Jimmy Day.
That's Jimmy Day, so he carved out a little bit here, and took this, all this back lot.
But he's interested in laying it down that way, so.
If he was willing to swap back here for that much.
A little parcel there, then he's golden.
Then you'd be in really good shape, you would, you'd just have two, you'd just subdivide those lots, and.
Yeah.
You'd have lots that would meet frontage and meet area.
This doesn't hang you up at all?
It, it, it can't, I mean, it, it would be an A and R.
Too. If you're talking one, two, three, four lots, is that kinda?
But.
I mean, couldn't, somebody couldn't like, you know, DPW or Fire Yard, or somebody come along and be like, you know what, that?
I don't think so. It's a road, it's a town road, I mean, it's not a town road, it's a, it's a private road that's maintained by the town, so it's a road.
I don't think so. Uh, yeah, I'd be surprised that there's not a law in the books about adding. More load to a, you know, a nonconforming road, even though the town does maintain it.
No, I don't, I don't know of any.
I'm, I'm just devil's advocate, you know, I'd be surprised, it's just like, they're gonna just keep adding and adding and.
If it didn't come. Well, I, I, I mean, if, if he was looking for a real subdivision, and had to come in here and ask us for a subdivision permit.
That changes everything.
Yeah.
Then we'd say, no, that's not enough.
Right now, you're just looking to add one, maybe two lots, tops.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And if, and he can do them as A and Rs, I think.
What, what is it, A and R?
Approval not required. In other words, you meet all the, all you would do is you would cut, you, no, you would come in here and say, this is what I wanna do.
So you don't need waiters.
And we would say, okay, you don't need our approval.
Okay.
And that would be a formal thing that you would then get, and it would be.
But it would still have to be on a, on a drawing.
Right.
And, yeah, you'd still have to go through that house.
Oh, yeah. So that's the preliminary in drawing, whatever she can do.
You'd still want your en- your engineer, you'd still want your engineer to make sure that.
There is nothing in.
Yeah.
You know, hidden somewhere that would.
Right.
Mean like, oh, you know, that's part of due diligence that she'll have to do.
This road's a dead end that continues down.
Right. Oh, absolutely, yes, and I, and I'd say before she actually drew something up, if you really thought you could make a deal with him for enough land up there. To make that into two lots.
Yeah.
You might wanna talk to her about that.
Okay.
Cause she could draw that up.
As two lots.
You know, as two lots, the way you would like to have it, and then you could go to your neighbor and say, you know, um, what, this is what I would like to have from you.
Okay.
Um, are you willing to make a deal?
Also, in other words, make a deal with this person to give them a lot?
No, no.
No.
Oh.
This person, yeah, it's, so if this isn't enough acreage, Jimmy knows.
See, this road keeps going.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it, that's right, comes over.
Yeah, it doesn't end there.
So, so if he swapped and got that much extra.
Yeah.
He could come off of here with a driveway, and off of here with a driveway with two lots, with plenty of frontage.
Now.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that, what if, what if you did a, can, I don't know, but the setbacks won't.
You won't be able to get anything there.
Yeah, the, the width of this lot is, yeah, a hundred feet maybe.
Oh, so you, you can't steal.
Yeah, it would make it more nonconforming.
You can't steal.
Yeah.
You wanna have it setback from the existing house? I guess what I'm saying is, if you gave this person. Some of this.
Why would you do that?
Get a road in there. Well, I guess I'm thinking more of.
No, they couldn't, because it would be, no, I don't think they could.
We looked at it, one of these two ro- houses would have to go.
Yeah. I'd say, yeah, I think they're both, they'd be both too close, yeah.
Well, that's right, cause if you're gonna put a road in, you're gonna need a full sixteen layout.
If you're gonna do that, yeah.
But if this house were to be sold, it's, it's, it's got everything you need there.
You'd come in, what, on the other side of it?
Uh, just, the, your forty feet would go from here to the old hooker houses here.
Right.
And this house would have to be torn down.
Torn down, okay, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
But if you're doing that now, but now you're, now you're doing a subdivision, right?
Should be torn down now.
Well, that's what I mean, it'd have to get into that, and that's the whole reason.
Now, now you're getting into.
Honestly, developers have been panting at this until they see that.
Yeah, they would, they'd have to buy the old house on the corner and tear it down.
Yeah.
And, and then you'd have full access.
And I don't even know if it would be worth it for them to do that.
I don't know if it would be.
That's, that's the long road, plus the long, plus utilities.
To get, and you'd only get maybe six lots, six or eight lots at the most.
That's why Kevin Kane, I, I mean, hit it, he had it all done with roads and all of that, but he had it all figured out.
Yeah. What killed that?
Um. A couple of things, I think the main one is Jimmy wanted to be, just be able to see Randolph from his back way though. That he did not want to see houses in his backyard. It was simple as that.
Okay.
And I tried to convince him that. You, you better have control over it until you lose control over it, you know, and who knows if someone buys this, what they're gonna put down here, you know?
Well, I mean, that's a good, there's a good incentive for him to make a swap with you.
Yeah.
Um.
And we wouldn't mind, I mean, if, if he gets eighteen acres and it's his retirement, great, he's a nice guy, he's, I grew up with him.
Yeah, so and if you can end up with a couple.
The biggest thing, now he's paying taxes on eighteen acres land too. Yeah, but I, I guess, I mean, since we're, since we're chasing this down.
Well, it would be taxes on the sign.
It would be, it would be undevelopable at that point, though, I think, cause it, well.
How do you get there, if this is Jimmy Day's, yeah, you gotta, you gotta right away, you got some wetland. Where's anybody going, you gotta right away, the right away is right there, and then there's another right away over here. So, where's anybody?
There's a power line there.
Where's anybody going?
Well, there is another possibility, and you, you might be able to find it, Noonan's Lane comes down here.
Yeah.
That looks a lot better, cause there's a big, that big truck right there, yeah.
Yeah, the big cul-de-sac, yeah, and if you can bring a road in here.
Yeah, that seems like the better way, because.
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
Cause this is.
Pretty flat.
Even though this is big, this is still landlocked, I mean, again, well, I guess, you were, you were talking on the, on the order of like six houses, right?
Wasn't the other possibility down off of, down off of Rose Way too, I know. All right, if Jimmy doesn't wanna pay, obviously, the property taxes on the, on the land.
Right.
On the raw land, then do the one house.
Right.
And then do the driveway down to a little.
To one house, you could still get, then you're, then you're covered.
Yeah.
If Jimmy doesn't wanna take that from you.
And I wouldn't blame him, I mean, did we? The land is.
Maybe he'd want some of it. You know, cause you wouldn't need it all to put a house down here, he, if, if he really wanted to block the back.
Oh, yeah.
He could take a piece of it back here to still give you something, right?
I'm sure so.
Well, that was what, I mean, Ke- Kevin Kane said, okay, we understand your feeling, let's move it back to here.
Yeah.
He still did a lot.
Okay.
And I understand, he grew up here, you know, he's got his log cabins down there too, so.
Sure. Yeah.
And as I said, for us, to some degree, it's a fire cell, you know, we, we need a substantial amount of money fairly soon.
So I guess the thing is that, that they have your engineer just draw it up in the most lucrative way possible.
Yeah, the best way for you, I mean, and you can, you can go.
With, with an A and R, with.
Well, the simplest, and they'll know, she'll know what an A and R is.
As of right, as of right.
Okay, okay.
And they, tell her that you're looking to do it that way, if, if it's reasonable. The other possibility would be the shared driveway that is a new part of our rig that you're probably not even familiar with, we're hardly familiar with it.
Okay. And that means one driveway, two houses?
Yes.
But you would need to do that in this aspect.
Well, here's what's running through my mind, this is, is fairly steep.
Well, he, he probably would. He'd probably have to call it that, cause he wouldn't have enough frontage for two lots, here it is.
No, if, you're, you're not gonna want to put one here, right?
Not really, the, the distance between here and here right now is not enough for two frontages here.
Right.
Right.
Right, so if he comes in.
With the driveway.
With the driveway, right, right.
Come, driveway here to a shared, to a cul-de-sac here?
No.
Oh.
Well, then you'd call it sharing it to this lot and to the back.
And then the back lots, right.
Okay. I mean, you wouldn't even need to use it for this lot, because it's already off of the right away.
Right.
But it, it could come under the reg as a driveway coming back to a, a, another lot back here.
Right, so you're only getting one lot in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't get two?
Well, then you're getting into.
Well, then you're getting into this blockage right here.
Yeah, we wanna keep the.
So you're saying even though this frontage is, is less than two fifty, conceivably, you could put a driveway here?
Yeah.
Really?
And just put one lot, one house down.
As a shared driveway between, in other words, you'd put a lot back here.
Oh, between, I get you.
So you'd be technically sharing it with the existing house and with the back house.
Ah, and that's the new rig.
That, there's a new rig that allows that.
Oh, for two houses, not any more than two.
Right. Then that would only be two, it would be this, the existing one and one in the back.
For the two houses, for the existing one. Okay, but couldn't you?
And you could still put one across the street.
Right.
Because this could still be.
I came to the right place.
This could still be an A and R.
And put the driveway anywhere you want. But I guess what I can't understand is, why couldn't you just? Make this, change that around to?
There's not enough frontage on the road.
Yeah, but you.
The shared driveway.
Yeah, but you're gonna do the shared drive, driveway.
Right, in other words, you have to come in under the shared driveway regulation.
Oh, but then it, then it would have to be. Yeah, then it would be.
To do it as an A and R, you'd need two hundred and fifty, right, you'd need a two, well, you'd technically be calling it two, because this one is, would still be here.
A development of one. I guess what I'm saying is, if you took this and made it its own piece of property and brought this in here, you couldn't do. A shared driveway to two houses back here, or would it then become a? You know, you, you're just, your engineer can look at.
Well, I, I, yeah, ask, tell the engineer to look at the new regs.
I think the other thing I'm hearing too, is if we could do some of the things that you're suggesting, one developer may be a lot more interested. Because there are three possibilities there.
Yeah, I would, I would think, if you found somebody that would be looking to come up with three lots.
Yeah.
They could potentially do that.
Okay. Cause that's the next step in this, is get this done, and then find a developer who's willing to do something.
If you could go to somebody with a drawing that shows two or three, and say it's, it's buildable, it's ready to go, it's, you know, permissible.
Well, I've met with a developer from, um, Norwood, and that's exactly what they said, if you can come in with a stake and perk and all that, we're real interested. You know, millions of dollars later.
Uh, well, I mean, it. Meet them halfway, get your, get your engineer to do the legwork, and show that, you know, as we've been saying, there's an A and R, you don't have to do all this, and then it's like. You know it'll perk.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then they have to survey it, but that's, that's dollars, it's not like it's a, it's not like it's a real.
Once you know you can do it.
Yeah, once you know you can do it, it's all mechanics.
Then it's, it's. It's, yeah.
Okay.
And money.
Well, it's money upfront, but money you should get back when you.
Well, that's it, is there's some hope that you're gonna get it back.
I would think, if you developed that plan, you'll get your money.
If, if you came in with the plans that we could, we could then, I mean, you could go through the whole approval on paper.
Right.
Before you did anything out there, like, you wouldn't have to go do the frac test, you wouldn't have to do all of that stuff.
That's the kind of, I, and I realize you, I don't mind putting some money in, as long as there's some promise at the end, so.
But I think that would be the way I'd look at it, is to try to get the, try to get it approved first.
Okay.
You know, get the, get, decide if you're gonna try to turn that triangle into two lots or not.
Yeah.
Um, decide whether you're interested in putting a, a, a second lot in the back, in fact, you might wanna talk to a developer and ask them what would they like? What would be most beneficial for you to do, you think you could get.
For their purposes.
Yeah, for their purposes, you think you might be able to get two lots up here, you might be able to split a lot and get another house back here. You might get four lots out of that, if he was willing to swap some of this, and then take the rest of this and protect himself.
Right, right, right.
You might get four out of it, including the one that's there.
But these'll also be on septic.
You'd have to look at all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they're gonna have to look at it in the sense of offsets and, you know, all that.
Yeah. All, yeah.
And I haven't been down there in a long, long time, slopes, I might, you know, septic might be.
Yeah, you know, they'd have to look at all those issues.
Yeah, and I, this is sloping land, but I know it's all gravel underneath, there's thirty feet of gravel down there.
Yeah, so I mean, you'd have to have the engineer look at it, where would you place septic, where, how would you place a house, where would the driveways go? How much of his land would you need to turn that into two lots, the way it is right now, I think you already have one lot.
Yeah.
Um, and then the potential shared driveway coming into the back to gain you one more.
Is this your house here?
That's your mother's house.
Yeah, that's.
No, this is mother's house, right.
That's right, right there.
Right, because it's a possibility too, that the developer could raise that and put up another brand new one.
Well, we were told at one point by Kevin Kane that they thought that maybe they would turn the house this way, and create more space than you could take a road in.
Yeah.
It's a beaut- it's, it's very well built and it's something special, but it's.
But I mean, I'd, I'd say, with these ideas in mind, talk to it, have, have your engineer.
Okay.
Talk, tell her what we've, we've said.
Right.
What the possibilities are, and, and then if there's a developer that they, you know, what, what would they like to see?
Okay.
You know.
Well, I certainly came to the right place tonight, well, you guys, I don't wanna last the agenda, so you get to go on.
Well, we're glad that it was helpful, sorry.
Yeah, enormously helpful.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see. So how many? How many houses do you have to build before you call it a subdivision?
Well, it has to be a subdivision, it wouldn't, these wouldn't be.
They'd be off of a shared driveway, but how many?
Only one, there'd only be one new house off the shared driveway, the other two houses would be A and Rs off of a common.
Unless you start, well, I guess what I'm saying is, unless you start carving this up. And isolating that piece of property.
Yeah, you'd have to.
And then create, then you could create a new shared driveway with two new houses off of that, in the back.
Well, that's a possibility.
But you can only go up to two, you're only getting two, that's all you're gonna get.
With the shared driveway.
Yeah.
But that potentially, then you're talking a possibility of five houses down there, including the one that's still with, that's there now.
So if one, two, three, four, right, yes.
If in the field, we had a shared driveway and, and enough layer.
You wouldn't even need a shared driveway there.
Okay, but conceivably, i- if going up from the existing road is too steep.
Oh.
And, and could you put two in the field off a shared driveway?
Yep, yep.
And then you're talking about possibly another driveway behind the house.
Another shared driveway going the other way.
Between the existing house and.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that's kinda pushing it.
I do too.
I really do, yeah, I just stick to very basic, stick with those two, and maybe the shared out, call it that.
And then the other part of it too, is I know Jimmy does, he wants to keep his big backyard, and that's okay too.
Chief draws, just never draw. Just never draw it up.
Right, yeah.
Um, sh- I mean, obviously, we're trying to get out from under the taxes and, and whoever buys, my mother's house probably won't wanna pay double taxes because of all that land, we paid twice as much because of all that land. Can that be donated to the town?
You can offer it.
Okay.
As, as conservation land.
I know, I know.
Conservation, or yeah?
Yeah.
I think it's very possible, cause it's good, it would be good conservation land, I mean, that's nice, those, those are nice woods down there.
Oh, it's great. Yeah.
I think, you know.
So is that, yeah, what's this big piece right here, is that landlocked piece, is that town? No, that's town, who, what is this?
A town, I'm pretty sure that town is right here, Jay, I mean, that's why the town might be interested.
That right there. Oh, a lot of wetland. Yeah, a lot of wetland.
They, I'm pretty sure the town owns right in through here, there's a big gravel pit here, under high tension, they mined for a long time, and there's a road right in here. Is that it? Ah, okay, they held gravel out of there for ten years.
And it's actually fairly close to the bottom of Rose Way over here too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was another thought, they were talking about potentially accessing from there.
Yes, um, there's a, there's a road up there, if you come down and take a left and keep going, it dead ends right there, right, yeah.
Magnolia.
Yes, it is Magnolia, yeah. Yeah, Kevin Kane was looking at that.